I will now call the June meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I will call on Commissioner Bauer for the invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we come to you today with sincerest gratitude for the many blessings of this life, including our great city of Suffolk and all those who live here. Lord, we ask that you open our hearts and minds to fully hear what is brought before us today and to rely on you for guidance, that we may use sound reasoning and judgment to make decisions that truly benefit the greater good of our community and ultimately our world. Make each of us instruments of your peace and stewards of your creation. All honoring glory is yours, O Father. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Wyman, will you call a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer?
Here.
Commissioner Creekmore? Commissioner Eberwin?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Goodman?
Here.
Commissioner Hicks? Vice Chairman Staler?
Here.
And Chairman Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
For that? Okay. Are there any corrections to the minutes for the May meeting? If not, they would stand as presented. Staff has requested that we remove one item from our agenda, the item C, from the public hearing, ordinance text amendment OTA 2023-006, electronic message boards. Commissioner, I would take a motion to remove that item.
So moved.
Got a second? Have a second from Commissioner Goodman. Can we have this with a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion to approve has been passed. We have two items on our agenda today that are not public hearings. There are family transfers. The first item is family transfer subdivision plat FTR 2018-00001 submitted by Bobby L. and Iona W. Burris. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Family transfer subdivision plat FTR 2018-0001 submitted by Bobby L. and Iona W. Burris, applicant and property owners requesting a family transfer subdivision pursuant to Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance to approve a family transfer subdivision plat to create one new parcel on property located at 6345 Godwin Boulevard, zoning map 3A, parcel 2. The affected property is further identified as being located in the Chucka Tuck Voting Borough Zoned RE Rural Estate Zoning District. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the rural agricultural use district. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision on property located at 6343 Godwin Boulevard, zoning map 3A, parcel 2, count number 254002090, FTR 2018-0001. Staff Planner Shannon Wolf will present staff's report on this item.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This family transfer was submitted by Bobby Burris on behalf of himself and his wife Alana Burris, property owners, to request to subdivide one new parcel for their son, Robert L. Burris, pursuant to Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The subject property is located in the rural agricultural use district as designated by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Mr. and Mrs. Burris own the subject parcel depicted above, which is located at 6345 Godwin Boulevard and is currently comprised of 11.15 acres. The proposed parcel for their son will be 7.9 acres in size with a single-family dwelling, which is depicted in yellow, while Mr. and Mrs. Burris will retain 3.25 acres with a single-family dwelling as the parent parcel. The surrounding area is zoned residential estate and conservation, which consists of single-family dwellings, fields, forested lands, and waterways. Bobby and Alana Burris received the subject property in 1990. The grantee, Robert L. Burris, has not previously received a family transfer parcel, thereby making him eligible for this request. Currently, the lot is nonconforming due to having two single-family dwellings on one parcel, and this family transfer will make both lots conforming by putting each dwelling on its own parcel. There will be a 50-foot ingress/egress easement established to provide access from Godwin Boulevard to the family transfer parcel in the rear. A deed of gift for the grantee has been prepared in conjunction with this plat, which prohibits the transfer of the property within 10 years of its receipt, except in conformity with Sections 31-514B3 of the UDO. Lastly, all parties have completed a sworn affidavit acknowledging the purpose of this family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the grantee and to keep the family estate within the immediate family. In summary, this request meets the criteria for a family transfer subdivision. Therefore, staff recommends approval of FTR 2018-0001. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Does anyone in the audience would like to speak to this item, on this transfer? Seeing none. Hearing none. Commissioners? Questions, comments, or motion?
I make a motion for approval of FTR 2018-0001. Hope I didn't leave a zero out there. For approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Have a second, Commissioner Bauer. Can we do this with a voice vote? I don't think there's anything else we need to do. All in favor? Voice by yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none. For the applicants, there's no other city requirements for this, and you have our approval. The next item, next is a family transfer subdivision plat request FTR 2023-0001 submitted by Attorney Frank Rawls, applicant on behalf of Thomas Lewis Carr and Bonnie C. Lewis.
Yes, sir. This is a family transfer subdivision plat request FTR 2023-0001 submitted by Frank Rawls, applicant on behalf of Thomas Lewis Carr, care of Bonnie C. Ellis, power of attorney, property owner, requesting a family transfer subdivision pursuant to Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance to approve family transfer subdivision plat to create one new parcel on property located at 1025 Kingsdale Road, tax map 30*3. The affected property is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the rural agricultural use district. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision on property located on Kingsale Road, tax map number 30*3, count number 150557000, FTR 2023-0001. Staff Planner Grace Brazil will present staff's report on this item.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a request to subdivide one new family transfer parcel for Betty P. Carr, who is the wife of Thomas Lewis Carr pursuant to Section 31-514 of the Suffolk Unified Development Ordinance. Thomas Lewis Carr owns the subject parcel depicted above, which is located on Kingsale Road and is currently comprised of approximately 168 acres. The proposed parcel for Mrs. Betty P. Carr will be 3.6 acres in size, which is depicted in yellow, while Mr. Lewis would retain 164 acres as the parent parcel. The surrounding area is zoned agricultural, which consists of single-family dwellings, fields, and forested land. Betty Carr previously conveyed her interest in the subject property to her husband, Thomas Carr, by deed of gift recorded on February 6 of 2023. The grantee has not previously received a family transfer parcel, thereby making them eligible for this request. The lot dimensions and building setback lines for the proposed new lot is consistent with the underlying agricultural zoning district, and each parcel fronts along a publicly maintained right-of-way. Additionally, the new proposed parcel will have an existing single-family dwelling and drain field, which does meet the minimum setbacks for the new lot lines. Lastly, all parties have completed a sworn affidavit acknowledging that the purpose of this family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the grantee and to keep the family estate within the immediate family. In summary, this request meets the criteria for a family transfer subdivision. Therefore, staff recommends approval of FTR 2023-001. That does conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. Does anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor of this request?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I don't wish... My name is Frank Rawls with Ferguson Rawls &amp; Reins, 332 West Constance Road in Suffolk. I'm here on behalf of my clients. I have nothing to add to a comprehensive report from planning. If I did, it would only add to y'all's time here. I would like to ask if Mr. Staler makes a motion, you check his zeros, please.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Is anyone else with any comments? Hearing none. Commissioners? Questions, comments, or motion?
I'm almost afraid to make the motion now.[735.00][735.01](Laughter) I'd move the approval of FTR 2023-0001.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Eberwin. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Can we do this with a voice vote? All in favor says aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? See no? No oppose. Congratulations, Mr. Rawls, you can convey to your constituents that it's been approved by this body.
(Inaudible). Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now we move to the public hearing section of our agenda today. I think we have two public hearings left today, and the public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttals. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today is conditional use request CUP 2023-013, 1832 Cotton Farm Lane. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request CUP 2023-013, 1832 Cotton Farm Lane submitted by Mary Ann Carlton, applicant and property owner, on behalf of Bruce Carlton, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306, 31406, and 31701B13 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish an accessory dwelling unit detached on property located at 1832 Cotton Farm Lane, zoning map 4*5*1, parcel 6. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chucka Tuck Voting Borough Zoned RL Residential Low Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Rural Conservation Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request CUP 2023-013. Once again, Staff Planner Shannon Wolf will present staff's report.
Thank you. As stated, this CUP is to establish a detached accessory dwelling unit. The property is located in the rural conservation use district outside of the city's growth areas. The property is roughly four acres in size and is zoned RL Residential Low Density Zoning District. To the north and south of the property area are single-family dwellings also zoned RL, and to the east and west is undeveloped properties zoned RE Residential Estate. The proposed detached accessory dwelling unit will be located in the rear of the property as shown. The accessory dwelling unit, as proposed, complies with the required front and side setbacks for the RL zoning district. However, due to the unit being attached to an existing garage, it will now be encroaching into the 30-foot rear yard setbacks. To alleviate this issue, the applicant did receive an administrative variance that reduces the rear setbacks to 21 feet. The applicant is proposing to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit consisting of 1,000 square feet to be used as their primary dwelling, and their daughter will occupy the main dwelling. On properties that contain a principal dwelling unit of more than 2,000 square feet, an accessory dwelling unit cannot contain more than 1,000 square foot of gross floor area. Due to the size of the main dwelling being approximately 4,000 square feet and the accessory dwelling unit being 1,000 square feet, this criteria has been met. Occupancy of the accessory dwelling unit cannot exceed one person per 200 square foot of gross floor area. Based on the proposed floor area of 1,000 square feet, not more than four individuals can occupy the unit. The accessory dwelling unit will be required to connect to the existing septic and well used by the main dwelling. Authorization and/or permitting will be required by the Virginia Department of Health for any modifications to these systems, which staff will verify prior to issuing any building permits. The supplied survey demonstrates that there will be adequate parking for current and proposed use in the existing driveway. The proposed accessory dwelling unit consists of a great room, kitchen, two bedrooms, and two bathrooms. The garage will remain a garage. Staff has evaluated the proposed use for consistency with the criteria set forth in the Unified Development Ordinance and finds that this conditional use permits meets those criteria as described in the staff report. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is suitable for the size and location of the subject property at 1832 Cotton Farm Lane. The accessory dwelling unit will not be rented and is not expected to negatively impact the surrounding community. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2023-013 with the conditions outlined in staff's report and the attached resolution. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience in opposition to this request? Seeing none. Commissioners? Questions, comment, or motion?
I have a question. Is this the first time there's been an accessory dwelling that's been attached to an existing garage? Is that something that we've seen before?
It's not uncommon.
I meant with the... It's not as popular anymore, but you know, there's always the conversion into a garage. Not trying to say that that's...
I was gonna say, that's far more common, is the conversion. But no, it's not uncommon for folks to utilize existing, like an existing footprint, to add on to it for a use like this.
I meant just to stay within the 1,000, like, square foot.
The 1,000 square foot only applies to the living area itself.
So that does have to stay and remain a garage? It can't be converted to be extra living space?
That is correct.
Right, okay.
Make a motion for approval of CUP 2023-013 with conditions?
Second. Got a second from Commissioner Goodman. Any discussion in the motion? Call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Hopefully, it's working today. Commissioners, start voting, please. All right, the motion is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. This item, the conditional use request, CUP 2023-013, 1832 Cotton Farm Road, will be approved by this body and will go to City Council for their action on July 19. The next item on our agenda today is ordinance text amendment OTA 2023-005, gravel parking in agriculture district and agriculture uses initiated by the City of Suffolk. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance text amendment OTA 2023-005, gravel parking in agricultural districts and for agricultural uses initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 6, Parking and Loading Standards, Section 31606A6, vehicular traffic areas. The purpose of the text amendment is to update and refine the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance, to allow gravel parking to be permitted within the agricultural zoning district and for agricultural uses at the department's discretion. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to ordinance text amendment OTA 2023-005. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report on this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is an ordinance text amendment to make amendments to Section 31-606, subsection A6, vehicular traffic areas, specifically as it pertains to the allowance of gravel parking areas, gravel parking within the agricultural zoning districts and for agricultural Currently, all required parking areas are required to be constructed with asphalt or concrete materials. The director may permit gravel or similar surface within overflow parking areas, low traffic storage yards, or otherwise listed in subsections 3 and 4 of the section that we are currently trying to amend. The proposed procedural change would allow for all required parking areas to utilize gravel parking within the agricultural zoning district or for agricultural uses. The gravel parking would allow for the design of parking areas that is more in keeping with the nature of the agricultural zoning district and uses. For the purpose of this section, the director will have the ability to administratively allow gravel parking to be permitted in the agricultural zoning district and for agricultural uses. On this screen, you will find the draft language that staff has prepared. As you can see, alterations have been made to Section 31-606, subsection A6A1, which grants the director the ability to administratively approve the gravel parking areas within the agricultural zoning district and uses. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
I will now open the public hearing. Is anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone in the audience in opposition to this request? Seeing none again. I will close the public hearing. Commissioners? Questions, comments, or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve OTA 2023-005.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion in the motion? Call for the vote.
Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of five to zero.
The City of Suffolk knows that has been approved by this body, and will go to City Council for their final approval on July 19. This concludes our public hearings for today, and now we'll move to the old business. And the first item on our old business is the Planning Commission bylaws amendment. And I think Mr. Wyman has some clarification on this?
Yes, sir. So this has kind of been on your radar for the last two months. Last month, you elected to proceed with the amendment as previously discussed, and as such, we are offering it for your consideration today. But what this impacts is your ability to order a change in meetings when necessitated, and allows you all as a body a little more latitude to do that. We're specifically concerned, at least in the immediate future, with next month, in which a great deal of our staff and hopefully some planning commissioners as well will be at the APA Conference for the Virginia Chapter 1 in Roanoke during your regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. So as such, if you elect to move forward with this bylaw amendment as presented, staff recommends that next month's meeting be rescheduled for July 25, which is one week after your originally scheduled meeting for next month. So in a nutshell, that is your bylaw amendment for consideration this afternoon.
Would you cover the section that the bylaws was actually amended?
Yes. Yeah, so this impacts, let's see, Section 1, Article 5, Section 1, as it pertains to your regular meetings. And the language that we are adding, so regular meetings of the commission, this is how it reads now, "Regular meetings of the commission shall be held on the third Tuesday of each month at 2:00 p.m. in the municipal building." We're adding the following language, unless otherwise ordered by the commission, "If the regular meeting day should be a legal holiday, the meeting shall be held at the same time and place on the first succeeding day, not a holiday." And that is the language we are offering as an amendment to the current bylaws.
Commissioners, we're changing the bylaws, and this particular case, we're affecting the July meeting, and going forward, it could affect any meeting that we might have conflict with. Having said that, Commissioner, any questions, comments, or motion?
Does this need to be two separate motions, or can it be covered under one?
Needs to be two separate motions. You've got to amend the bylaws before you can move the meeting.
I will move that we amend the bylaws as recommended from Article 5, Section 1.
amend the bylaws? Second. Got a second from Commissioner Goodman. Okay. Any discussion of that motion? Do this with a voice vote also. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone in opposition? Mills, we do the second motion.
I'll make a motion that our regularly scheduled meeting for July 2023 be moved to Tuesday, the 25th, at 2:00.
Second. Any discussion of that? Hearing none. Can we voice vote on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Got the bylaws taken care of, and now we can move on to the new business, and I will give it back to Mr. Wyman.
No new business at this time. Oh, we do have the status update. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm getting used to my laptop as well. So the results of City Council, May 17, 2023, there were three items that went before them for public hearing. The first, rezoning proffer amendment for Parker Enterprises. This was originally to rezone some property there on Sleepy Hole Road. They came before City Council to modify some existing proffers as it related to some screening and a fence to be located at their property line. and a fence to be located at their property line. In essence, what they were requesting is a modification of the type of fence to be used and a modification of the type of vegetation. City Council approved this request. Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2022-028, Indian Trail Solar. This was brought back to City Council as they elected to reconsider this item, as it was originally denied. This is for zoning map 39, parcel 39, located there on Indian Trail. This was approved with the staff recommended conditions. And lastly, CUP 2023-001, this is Verizon Wireless Cell Tower to be located on Mineral Springs Road. This was approved with conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Weyer. And there was no plat approvals? Okay. Commissioners, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say one thing, and that is, I appreciate Kevin and the staff for educational sessions on our new laptop computers, because I believe in, we'd been in left field if we hadn't had the help. But they seem to work pretty well so far, so thank you again for all your help, especially us old folks.
I have one comment. We have one commissioner, Creep Moore's in the hospital. I think he's having surgery either today or tomorrow, but I'd like to just keep him in our prayers that he have a speedy recovery and be back with us in July 25. And I think Mr. Weyer is probably gonna make an announcement of a new addition to your staff.
Yes, sir. I'm very excited to announce, we now have an Assistant Director of Planning, Meg Pittenger. She comes to us from the city of Portsmouth. We are very excited to have her. She's been with us for almost a month at this point. So I know she's making all of our lives in the Planning Department a little easier, and we're very excited to have her.
I know she's made my life a whole lot easier, so...
That's right.
...dealing with this laptop, so... Thank you, Meg.
Thank you.
I think the single biggest challenge we face... The single biggest challenge we face this year in the Planning Department is getting you tech savvy, so...
Well, we're getting there, slowly.
Okay, commissioners, any other comments? If not, we stand adjourned.